Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Alder Bussey.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Acting Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Miller and Alder O'Connor are excused.
Please join me in the podium, minions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are chain of motion on the minutes from March 21st.
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
additions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both men sir approved. Appearances, we have two proclamations tonight. The first one recognizing the Monona Grove Boy Swim and Dive Team on winning the WIAA Division Two State Championship. What's that? Coach.
Put in the team.
Join me at the podium. Whereas the Monona Grove Boy Swim and Dive Team won its second straight Division Two title at the 92nd Annual State Boy Swimming and Diving Championships on March 19th, 2016, at the University of Wisconsin Aditorium, and whereas this is the third state title in four years for the team under Coach Kelly Shattis, and whereas Monona Grove scored a total score of 296 points and placed first in five of the 12 events, and whereas Monona Grove swimmers also set two state records at the meet, they now hold the Division Two state record for the 500-yard freestyle and the 200-yard freestyle relay, and whereas prior to winning the state title, the team also won the Badger Conference South Title and the Division Two Bearable Sectional Title, and whereas each of these young athletes is highly disciplined and focused, but they train and compete as a team, bringing to the pool a spirit of sportsmanship and a strong sense of compassion for and pride in their teammates. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Catherine Thomas, Acting Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council hereby commend and congratulate the 2015-16 Monona Grove Boy Swim and Dive Team on their championship title and ask the community to join me in celebrating their extraordinary season. Signed in the city of Monona, Dade County, Wisconsin, this fourth day of April 2016, Catherine Thomas. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you for this. You know, I really like this repeat of coming back here. You know, year after year, we can just make a little tradition, but I think it's really special when we take time out of the day and time out of this meeting to acknowledge their efforts and what they've done, and you know, not every coach gets to stand in front of a crowd like this and say thank you. I think we had a lot of great swimmers in the state, and they kind of rose above the rest with their dedication to the team and dedication to their community, and you know, seeing our youth group, we saw a couple swimmers out there, and seeing this Monona swimming tradition kind of grow, I'm really excited to see what the future holds, and hopefully I get to see you guys again next year.
And not only are you great swimmers, I think you're great men, and we're proud to have you as members of our community.
Thank you.
We have another proclamation declaring April 29th as Arbor Day in the city of Monona. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Monona has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices, now therefore I, Catherine A. Thomas, Acting Mayor of the city of Monona, Dade County, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2016, as Arbor Day in the city of Monona, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees in woodland. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed, the city of Monona, Dade County, Wisconsin, this fourth day of April 2016, Catherine Thomas. We have one public appearance on Schluter dredging assessment. Rob Colletta would like to speak against it.
Oh, no, I'm fine. Thank you. So, thank you for hearing me. As you recall, at your last Public Works meeting, you considered a, or at your last City Council meeting, you considered a assessment schedule from the Public Works Committee for, assessment schedule for charging residents for the dredging of the Schluter Channel. We didn't think that it was fair because I had found a report that was performed by the city engineer that was a scientific examination of the material to be removed from the channel that determined that 90 percent of that was soil that had eroded from the park, and 10 percent of it was silt that had been generated by stormwater runoff. So we presented that evidence to you. You asked us to go back to the Public Works Committee, present it to them. We did that last week. They found it very compelling, and they changed their assessment schedule accordingly, which is in front of you right now. I only asked for one small adjustment to that assessment schedule. In the previous assessment schedule that they had presented to you, they had used an adjusted frontage calculation that had been proposed, I believe, by Mayor Miller and has been used in the previous dredging project for the Bell Isle. That set minimums and maximums that were to be charged to the residents, a minimum of 50 feet of frontage, the maximum of 100 feet of frontage. In the assessment schedule that you have in your package today, that minimum, maximum, adjusted frontage was somehow lost in the shuffle. So I would ask that you simply reinstate that which is previous practice into the assessment schedule that you have before you today. It's the same adjusted frontage schedule that was previously supported and approved by the Public Works Committee. It matches a method of calculating the division of the funds for the dredging of the Schluter Channel that I presented at the March 7th Public Works Committee. So again, questions?
So I'm just looking at that schedule, and we don't have page numbers, but it's section.
So this is not the schedule that's in your handout. This is a different schedule that I presented to the Public Works Committee on March 7th that you do not have. That's correct, Dan?
No.
Yeah, it's not in this packet.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to appear? Not, I'll declare the appeared section closed. We'll move to the consent agenda. Approval of applications for 2015-2016 operator's licenses, Benjamin D. Johnson, PTAQ, Yolanda Bell, Speedway, Monona Drive, Deshonda L. Johnson, Speedway, Monona Drive, Caitlin B. Persak, Speedway, Monona Drive, Anthony L. Cosby, Speedway, Rell Avenue. Item two, approval of applications for 2015-2017 operator licenses, Latoya R. Douglas, PTAQ, Lyse M. Hessler, Walmart. Item three, approval of renewal applications for 2016-2017 operator licenses, Edward K. A. Sinrick, Tobacco Outlet Plus, Kristen L. Krebs, Tobacco Outlet Plus, Josiah A. Leclair, Tobacco Outlet Plus. Item four, approval of renewal applications for 2016-2018 operator licenses, Mitra L. Podell Swad, Indian Restaurant. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Item G, unfinished business aid, consideration of ordinance 3-16-677, amending the comprehensive plan, the Plan Commission. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
On the agenda tonight is a request for action on the final updated 2016 to 2036 comprehensive plan. This is a complete rewrite, repeal, and replacement of the original 2004 plan. It's a robust 180-page document compiled by the Plan Commission, other city committees, department heads, and with input from Monona residents and businesses. Two weeks ago, I presented about a 15-minute summary on the plan's contents at a public hearing before the city council, and we have not received any new comments, and are therefore requesting final adoption of the plan tonight.
Is there further questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Item B, consideration of resolution 16-3-2089, approval of task order number 16-01 for library parking lot design and construction-related services, La Strand Associates, Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Item C, consideration of resolution 16-3-2085, establishing a special assessment schedule for dredging of the Schluter Beach Channel, Public Works Committee. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Dan?
Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Thomas. This was presented at the Finance Committee previous to this meeting, and the recommendation carries forward from Finance based on what you see before you. I would like to add what Mr. Colletta stated before. On March 7th, the city council meeting, he provided a handout to you, which was also included in the March 31st Public Works Committee packet. On that handout, he identified a method two, which is essentially the same thing that you have before you, that Public Works Committee approved of. The only difference from what his method two had versus what Public Works brought forward is his version had an adjusted frontage, meaning 100-foot maximum and 50-foot minimum frontages. The Public Works version has shoreline frontage, actual shoreline frontage. So if you choose entertain his method two, it's a difference of around $2,000. 4505 Winaco Road and 4400 Outlook, those two properties would see an increase in what we have from the Public Works version. Ms. Moore at 4505 Winaco Road, she has 20 feet of frontage. She would be bumped up to 50 feet. Currently, she would be at $923. She would be bumped up to 2,308 and some change. I'd have to do the calculation. Marjorie Kravitz at 4400 Outlook is at 41.5 feet. She would be bumped up to 50 feet. She's currently at 1916, and she would be at 2308.5. Mr. Colletta at 4402 Outlook is at 179 feet. He would be brought down to 100 feet. He is currently at 8,264. His new one would be 4,617 and some change. So like I said, I would have to calculate this out and put it on paper, but we would see about a $2,000 addition to the city cost if you entertain his method two. That being said, what you have before you is the Public Works Committee version, and they are recommending that the city pays 90 percent of assessable cost, and the four residential property owners pay 10 percent of the assessable cost. The Schluter Park parcel is excluded from the 10 percent assessment cost share, and on page two is the version that Public Works passed last week Thursday.
Since I was at Public Works, if you will indulge me, Public Works, it was, they voted 90-10. They specifically did not want to go back to the 50, the minimum of 50, and change it, that actual front footage would be what would be used. They also addressed the issue of, if you take the 10 percent and the city does 30 percent, and then the city pays for their share, that there was concern that there would be double-dipping, and they looked at that very carefully and said, you know, the city paying 90 percent of it was, they thought, fair and reasonable. I mean, there is no exact science to this, and you can go back to the changing of the maximum and the minimum footage, but that was done in a different situation with different circumstances, and so they chose not to apply that in this particular situation. Does that make sense? You're looking.
Well, somewhat. I mean, I certainly, I understand the logic of the 90 percent allocation for the city, but the way that, I mean, this was, if I understand this correctly, we've just taken the exact shoreline frontage for each property and plugged those numbers in without regard for minimums or maximums, so.
Yes.
What was the logic? I'm trying to remember when we did that at Bell Isle.
I mean, what, I think what the committee would, if I could speak on behalf of the committee, we didn't apply anything else. I mean, you can't pick and choose which you, I mean, you can pick and choose, but we didn't apply anything else that we applied at Bell Isle. They didn't think that we were bound to do the minimums and maximums.
I'm just trying to remember why we did that at Bell Isle. Because we did, didn't we?
I think it was City Council that chose the min's and max. I don't think that was decided at Public Works Committee.
Okay.
Right. There were only a handful that would have bumped up to the 50.
I mean, I think you can make the case that everybody benefits about the same, and so if you have an extra wide lot, why should you, I mean, I can make arguments for or against either one, using the minimums and not doing it. But I'm not, but I don't think that, I mean, in response to why Public Works didn't do it, I don't think they felt bound to do it just because they did it at Bell Isle. And I think that, I mean, this is a really difficult dilemma, I think, because you have such variation in property, in the length of the properties on the cove. It is what it is. I mean, but nobody on the committee at all brought that, I mean, somebody said, do you want to do this? And they said, no, and nobody wanted to. Further discussion?
I'm, I see lots of different schedules here. I'm trying to make sure that I have the right one. So the pieces that were in our packets, there's one that says 3A, and then there's one in the box that's on the back.
Right. The one on the back side of the resolution is the one that Public Works can be brought forward. It says PWC recommendation on it. That would be the one that Public Works recommended. Then on the back of the handout, there's four pages that Mr. Colletta brought forward. This scenario 3A is his calculation.
And is that different than what was handed out at Finance and Personnel?
No.
No? Okay. And so, and the one that was brought forward from Public Works does not have a shoreline aspect applied to the park?
No, because the city is paying 90 percent of the cost.
And that's part of why I was looking at these two different pieces about that scenario. So if the park was owned by another person and not owned by the city, number one, we wouldn't be addressing the 90 percent. This would all be shared cost, it would all be in the 70-30 split.
That's right.
And so, so some of this has to do with, because that property is owned by the city, people are entertaining a different adjustment to this, and I understand that, and I can accept pieces of that coming from the Public Works Committee. I have concerns about how that goes forward, and let's say this was just a different resident on that property, would we have residents saying, no, it's your soil, that's, and they're not mine? I want you to pay 90 percent of it, and I want us the share of the 10 percent. So I'm concerned about how this.
Are we setting a precedent? Is that your question? And I will tell you that I believe we are not setting a precedent because we did Bell Isle differently, we are doing this differently. And there is no science to these things, and you try and use your best judgment. And I think Public Works felt that the city, I mean, if you go back through the history as we were reminded, it was brought up that the city might do the dredging, and we, as someone said, kick the can down the road. I think that was, was that your phrase? And we didn't do it, and we didn't do it. And Public Works, it sort of, not sort of, we expect the city to live to a standard where, here we are, we have erosion control laws, and we are eroding into a cove, and so, is it exact and is it perfect? I think there are many more reasons. There's the benefit of who benefits from this. It's very different from anything else, and this was, in the best judgment of the Public Works Committee, the most reasonable and fair thing to do. You know, I, that's, I mean, I speak for the committee, but I, but they take these things, you know, they worry about precedent, they worry about, you know, how do you be exactly fair? There's, and they tried to do what they thought was the fairest for all parties, and yes, the city is bearing a bigger burden than they usually do, but I think, I think they feel that the city was more accountable for the amount of dredging than, I mean, we're not proud of it. Dan?
If I could, Alderman Holmquist, on the front page, current city ordinance 8D provides a way or a path for the city council to choose some other form. So I think, I think that paragraph is there.
It is, and so if I was the property owner of 4505, and I have 20 feet of shoreline frontage, and I had no retaining wall, and I had the big river flowing through my property, and it could be determined, boy, I'm the biggest culprit of this, would we be having that same conversation and using D as a way to assess that individual more than the other individuals because they likely are more culpable in that scenario? So I, that's just my concern and difficulty with this piece, but I do agree. I've been over there, I know what's going on. I mean, clearly, the majority of the soil is coming from one property. It happens to be owned by the city.
I just also wanted to add that for me, one of the compelling arguments here is that stormwater sediment, which, it's something that we're dealing with now with the improvements we're making at the park, but it's not at all illogical to recognize the fact that the systems we have in place now are not as effective at removing silt and other runoff, and that outfall is significant. So stormwater is something that is generated by the entire neighborhood. It has nothing to do with those particular property owners. So for me, that's a compelling reason to justify the 90-10 split. I think Alder Holmquist's point is a good point to make with respect to whether or not we might make differing assessments to property owners based on the condition of the shoreline. I think that's an appropriate precedent to put on the table, because when you have property owners who maintain their shoreline versus those who don't, and you can make an argument like this, then it becomes in the public interest to try to balance those interests, because a property owner who is invested in retention and stabilization of the shoreline does not have the same responsibility for that erosion that a property owner who does not. I'm not sure where we're going to be facing this in the coming.
Well, and I would tell you, I would hate to get there, because suppose I put a retaining wall in this week, and you're going to dredge, and I didn't for years and years, and you decide to dredge next week, then I have no culpability, although I may have led to it going, so it's not, oh, it's a cut, I mean, I let, I let a lot of soil go in there until this year, so then you have to go into how many years if you put the retain, I mean, I get very nervous about that. Is there further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. We will move to item D, consideration of ordinance 2-16-675, amending 6-1-4 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Sidewalk Assessment, Public Works Committee. Mr. Stefani.
Do we have a motion there?
Oh.
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Thomas. What you have before you is the resolution to change the Code of Ordinance Regarding Sidewalk Assessments. Attorney Cole did provide this front sheet with the intent paragraph. Public Works Committee chose to remove two sentences. If you turn to the next page, you'll see the two sentences that Public Works Committee is recommending that be removed from what Attorney Cole drafted in the intent paragraph. The reason being, more like question, why do we have to single out pedestrian use? I think the Public Works Committee felt that those two particular sentences didn't need to be in that paragraph. That was the only change that came forward from what Attorney Cole wrote.
Alderman Bussey?
Why did they feel it was necessary to remove that, those sentences?
Because, what their feeling was, was that particularly the part where it says, where pedestrian traffic is likely because one person could be described as pedestrian traffic.
They're not encouraging bikes to be used on sidewalks, are they?
No. No, they were just saying any place someone might walk. No, they were just saying any place someone might walk, they could say they want a sidewalk.
Got it. Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move to item two, new business. Both items, well, there are several items there stored that are starred for immediate action. Item A, consideration of resolution 16-4-2091, providing for the sale of $2,890,000 water system and sewer system revenue refunding bond series 2016. B. Is there a motion to take this item out of order?
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This resolution is, just to start, is the authorization, we always do this first, for our financial advisor to start negotiating. So about the detail of this, this is a refinancing of two loans we have outstanding. Back in 2006, we took a loan out, a water revenue bond payable over twenty years for And then we also, in 2013, we took out a water and sewer revenue ban, which is basically, it's basically a five-year note, where it's just basically paying interest, and then we put into a long-term debt. So this is refinancing that. The main one I'm going to talk about is the 2006 one. Based on this one, the proxy savings we're going to get from this refinancing, this loan is about, projected by our financial advisor, Jeff Blondie, is about $193,000 in interest costs saved over ten years. Why is that? The current coupon rates is basically what the current interest rates we're paying on the payments is between 4.125 to 5% over the next ten years. To refinance it, we'll get the coupon rate or the interest rate down to, between two and three percent based on his projections. And that will give us a savings of 193,000, roughly 193,000 of interest cost. So I think this is a very prudent thing to do, is to save the city or the utilities that much money in interest costs. The 1.4, 1.1, $1,435,000 revenue ban has to be refinanced in the next, over the five years, and this is the best time to do it, to roll it in together, to get that extra savings with the rates being as low as they are right now. So we're recommending that we refinance this and save the city, the utilities some money, to come back at the next meeting with, with the final numbers.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those motion carries. Item B, consideration of resolution 16-4-2093, approval of participation in a Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation safety grant titled 2016 Speed Grant.
Move to suspend the rules, take this item out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Thank you for having me. We've obtained another traffic grant with your approval. The grant would run May 1st through September 30th with an emphasis on speed enforcement. The grant is for $13,500, breaks down to $8,500 for overtime wages and payroll benefits, and $5,000 for speed enforcement equipment. The standard match of 25% is in place, and that is $3,375, and that can be offset by on-duty activity.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item C, convene enclosed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85.1-D, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Option to purchase real estate at 6414 Bridge Road. Is there a motion to go in closed session?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder State?
Aye.
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Thomas?
Here. Hi. Do we want to do this now so we don't have to do it next week? Alderman Bussie?
Any reason we can't?
Is there any reason why we can't do this? Will we convene in, in open session? Is there any reason why we can't do this now?
No.
Absolutely no.
Okay, you read it.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, you got to read the, don't you have to read the?
Oh, I suppose I, I do, I could, yeah. Item E, consideration of resolution 16-4-2094, a resolution to extend options to purchase real estate located at 6414 Bridge Road.
Move to suspend the rules, take this item out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those motion carries. We'll move to item E.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
Do we have to have a roll call for that, or no?
We can, it'll be fine.
Okay.
Do you like a roll call?
No, just curious.
No, no.
No.
If we don't need it, we don't.
What's the dollar amount? We don't know.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, then no. Don't even.
Okay, we'll move to item F, consideration of resolution 16-4-2092, approving an amendment to the lease agreement with Madison Cellular Telephone Company for installation of equipment.
Oh, go ahead. We have, we have a master agreement with Madison Cellular Telephone Company for the antenna equipment that we have on the top of City Hall. And whenever new equipment is added and it's greater in number or size, then we need to do a lease amendment. And this amendment has been reviewed by the city attorney and the plans by the city engineering company, and it would result in an addition of $3,600 additional dollars in revenue per year.
Is there any reason not to suspend the rules, take this item out of order? I'll move that we suspend the rules, take this item out of order. Second. I'll move approval. Nope, got a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those?
Move approval. I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those motion carries. Item G, consideration of resolution 16-3-2090, adopting a memorandum of understanding with the Fire EMT Employees International Association of Firefighters, IAAF Local 311, regarding section 17-1, work week schedules, finance and personnel, Public Safety Commission. There's a starred for immediate action.
Move that we suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move approval.
Second.
Chief?
Good evening. Thanks for going over this. The, currently, we have eight full-time firefighter paramedics, and we're looking at putting this agreement, this MOU in. It does have a sunset clause, which is one of the things that we're, any time we're having MOUs now, we're trying to get through. This did go, I believe, in front of Public Safety and Finance and Personnel. This has no impact on the budget, has no impact on hours or anything like that in changing the number of hours they're working. It's just allowing me to, because we, we have three shifts, A, B, and C shift. There's two firefighter paramedics on each shift. Well, now we have eight employees, so we've got two that are kind of oddballs, for lack of a better term. And if I was to put them on an A, B, or C shift, one of the three shifts would never have three personnel on it. This is allowing me to put them on a shift. Currently, they work one day on, one day off, one day on, one day off, one day on, four days off. The two newest employees will be working one day on, two days off, one day on, two days off. This allows the two newest employees to work with all three shifts. It also allows so that A, B, or C shift has three people on their shift two of their three days. So it, it, it's a better work schedule for covering sick days, vacation days. We don't have to hire in as much overtime. It allows us to, to, you know, fill those shifts with that third person that's already on duty. We don't have to call in for overtime, don't have to pull in LTEs. So in that aspect, it does actually save some, some money for the overtime. So the schedules are kind of a difficult concept to understand. I, I completely understand them. For FLSA, it works well. Like I said, it does not change the number of hours that they work per week. They'll be working the same number of hours as the A, B, and C shift. It's just a D and an E shift, depending on what happens at the end of the year. If we get the ninth position, then we'll move all three employees back to the A, B, and C shift so that all three shifts are on the same shift.
Question?
Just curious why we use memos of understanding versus amendments to the contract?
This one is in between, you know, this is to get it started right away, and we aren't going to be negotiating for a little while yet, so I guess it buys us time, but that's why we felt it was important to have that MOU expire when the contract expires so that, you know, it can either become part of the contract or we find it's not necessary anymore, but at least, you know, when we're reviewing the contract, then we need to, to take a more permanent look at it.
Yep, and then we will be negotiating at the end of this year. The contract is up at the end of, on December 31st. So this will either be incorporated into the contract, depending on if we get another person, or it will just disappear, and then the three shifts will go back to the, to the A, B, and C.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Have further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item H, reports of committees, commissions, boards, men, city administrators, city attorney, department managers. Any department heads or city staff?
Fire Department's just been operating as usual. The, the new truck has been ordered, the, it's in the process of the drawings being made up. Truck committee has met and bids were received for the extrication equipment. They have gone over those. They have made a recommendation for one set of tools. We, we basically have two different sets of tools that we're utilizing for the extrication. One is basically tethered, it's a hydraulic, an electric over hydraulic system. It's tethered to the truck by hoses. We're also looking at what are called battery-operated extrication equipment. It's something new that's up and coming. We're looking at getting a couple pieces of battery-operated equipment that can, you know, it's not tethered to the truck, you can take it as far away from it as possible. And so they're, they're currently going over the specs on that equipment and going to determine what they're going to purchase for, or what they're going to recommend for purchase on that equipment. On staffing side, we have had quite a few, quite a bit of interest in volunteer firefighting, or paid-on-call firefighting, so it's, we're continuously interviewing personnel and going through, we're at, right now, thirty-six volunteer or paid-on-call personnel, and they, they range from forty years of experience all the way down to no experience at all. So staffing has been going well. We have had some nights where we, we've had the engine staffed 24 hours, so, which is great. That's all part of the, with us opening up our borders. We require the people that don't live within our response area to do a 24-hour shift at the fire station. That has been happening. We just took on a new intern, so currently, we're, we're down to one intern. This will bring us up to two interns. I didn't want to bring two interns on right away. We're trying to stagger the start time for the interns. The new intern, she will start sometime, about a week after she graduates. She's a senior in high school down in Janesville, so, but she does have firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT, so she's got, she's got a lot of experience for a, a young lady that is still a senior in high school. She has her stuff together. I mean, she knows what she wants to do, and she was very, very good in the interview process, and we're, we're excited to get her on, so that's, that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Alderman Homquist?
Go report.
Alderman Bussie?
Our next Plan Commission meeting will be the 28th of April.
Alderman State?
No report.
Not even from New York, the Big Apple?
Hamilton is amazing.
City Clerk?
Gee, you might have heard there's an election tomorrow. Please come out. The polls are open from seven to eight. We're ready for you and looking for a pretty high turnout. But, you know, just leave a little extra time. The photo ID requirement does take a little extra time for each voter, and also the voter machine, the tabulator is a little slower process than we're used to. So just be a little patient, but everything is set up and ready to go, and, and we have plenty of workers, and it should be a really wonderful, a high turnout, exciting day. Thank you.
City Administrator?
The big project our staff will be working on over the next few months is the recodification. We've got our editorial and legal analysis and the draft manuscript delivered, and so department heads will be working on some recommendations to take back to committees, but the book is several hundred pages, so it will take some time to process all of these chapters. There are some that are, you know, pretty recent and pretty updated, and some that need to be maybe kind of started from scratch and redone, so it will, it will be quite a process. So watch for that in your committees to come.
My report, thanks for memories. It's been an honor and a privilege. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Re-adjourned.